To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start off with public comment. I am gonna ask, as much as everybody has been, we've been letting you go, we'll go. Tonight's kind of a special meeting, so we don't wanna be here too late because we've got some non-public to do. So if you could kinda just keep it to the point. And on the only agenda items, only, so who's gonna step up?
Hi, my name's Laura Hardy. I just wanted to give an update on the article which appeared on the school district ballot back in March 12th. It was Article Six about withdrawing from the SAU. And just to read the article to you and your seat.
Excuse me, Laura, is that on the agenda? Because this is kind of a special meeting. If you could just, do you have an appointment? We know what the article is, it's for withdrawal. But is there something you wanna make a quick point?
I just wanted to give an update on where we are on the article.
Can you ask for that to be on the agenda? Just because like we're caught in this narrative.
Okay, I'm sorry, because public comment has, the past seven years has been.
On the agenda items.
Okay, it's been.
All right, so as I say, we kinda have the update. But if you want the continuing down.
But I don't think the voters have the update, so.
Yeah, well, I will put you on the agenda for the next meeting, the 14th, all right?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, public comment. On the agenda items, please.
Hi, I'm Ethel, and coming before you guys about the preschool issue. I'm trying to keep it as short as possible.
Excuse me, your name?
Ethel. Um, I.
Ethel, can you give your last name, say it for a minute?
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, I have children that was through the school, and now I have a grandchild that is a preschooler. Um, and I'm trying, I'm trying to keep it as short as possible, I know. But I also have letters from parents, I don't know who I'm gonna give this to.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, we all know that, we've been told that you're not. The administration, the administration's not willing to renew the contract for Ms. Andrea. And we're all very upset about that. Um, Ms. Andrea has, um, she's welcomed all of our children. Um, and she's been very, she's treated our children like they're, she, they're, um. She may not have grown except for four-legged animals, has children, but she is very good with all of our children. And she's gonna, we're gonna lose a very good asset if we do not renew her contract. Um, and I have so much more I want to say, but I, I can't because I'm gonna try to keep it short. Um, it's just, it's an awful thing that our administration is willing to lose all of our good faculty. I feel like they push all the good faculty aside and let them just walk. There's so much bad going on in this world. And you hear of all of the bad things that happen to kids in, within schools, with, on school buses and everything else. And you have a good teacher like Ms. Andrea who goes above and beyond for these kids. And she treats these children as if her own, and she cares for them and loves them and nourishes them. And watches their safety. And she makes sure that they are very safe. And she's, they're, she's willing to, that we're willing to just let her walk out the door? That's not fair, that's not fair. And us grandparents, parents, family members, all want to see Ms. Andrea stay in our school community. And I just feel like somebody needs to stand up for her. And us parents, grandparents are willing to do that, whatever it takes. Someone needs to change that.
Your, I'm sorry, um, if your granddaughter is in her class right now?
Yes.
So your, would your granddaughter be affected, um, if we change the, well, with this upcoming change of the preschool?
Yes, because she's a three-year-old, and next year she would still have Ms. Andrea.
Okay, is she four-day?
She, right now she does go, um, she goes, yeah, she goes four days.
She goes four days right now? Thank you, so I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to know.
No, that's fine, and honestly, with the, um, she's all kinda screwy with her. I have a Wednesday off because of this playgroup that takes place in her classroom. And honestly, if I can just jump ship on that as well, real quick, touch base on that. I think that that's kind of, kind of craziness as well with the playgroup. Because there's people that come into the school for playgroup, and they get to just walk in there. They're not fingerprinted, they're not background checked. Who, we don't know who's coming in there, but I, as a grandparent, have to be background checked and fingerprinted. Are we really finding out who's coming into the school? Are we really knowing who's coming into the school?
That's a good question.
I know we can't if you're not fingerprinted, right?
I cannot. You're not supposed to enter the school. I mean, if you're coming in for a playgroup though, I, do we really know who's coming in for the playgroup?
We'll definitely note that down, because I know everybody has to be fingerprinted, usually for a lot of things. And, um, I, we definitely will jot that. But Ethel, you're gonna continue, go ahead. Do you have something more to say?
Thank you. I think I covered it, if anybody else wants to talk. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else with public comment?
Hello, let me first start by introducing myself. My name is Jenny Prescott. I grew up in the Seabrook slash Hampton School System, preschool to senior year where I graduated from Winnetka High School. My children both are now students at Seabrook Elementary School. My daughter Summer is in the developmental preschool program. Andrea Draka is her teacher. Summer has always been delayed developmentally. However, in April of 2023, we got the diagnosis we were looking for. She was diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, sensory processing deficiency, and severe speech delays. I'll admit to you, starting the school year, I was weary of a teacher new to the school district being my daughter's teacher. As I grew up in this system, I knew most of the teachers. That weariness quickly turned to joy. Summer quickly grew very fond of Ms. Draka, even at times calling her her best friend. The progress that Summer has made under the guidance of Andrea is immense. When Summer started school, she was a severe low mood risk, always running away from everyone and not coming back until she was caught. She couldn't really form sentences, she wasn't able to sit still for organized activities, and would not even sit down to eat her own food. I have visited the classroom many times and observed my daughter sitting with her friends, eating, sharing toys, reading books. She still runs away from me sometimes, even from the classroom, but it's usually just to go see her friends in the preschool classroom adjacent to hers. The difference brings now is that she has listening skills and she's told to come back or go back, and she does. Andrea this year has gone above the average of students and includes the parents in classroom learning as much as she possibly can. Learning the news that the SAU and school board was not renewing her contract as an educator at Seabrook Elementary School is very disheartening and frankly a mistake. Ms. Draka puts her all of her, puts her all into her students and observes the opportunity, and deserves the opportunity, sorry, to keep forming the young minds of this whole district. Thank you. I also have copies.
Yes, um, actually, the school board hasn't had any say in this yet, just so you know.
Sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, no, I have a copy of my letter and also other letters as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else with public comment on the agenda items? Come on up.
Ms. Andrea, um, this is about, and I apologize because my son has also lost a preschool teacher, and that's hard. I don't know Ms. Andrea's, this is just about the schedule for the preschool. Um, I'd just like to speak in regards to that. Lacey and Patrick brought up at the last meeting that they had a child who was able to participate as a peer role model. And I have also been able to share that experience. Uh, my son was what was called a peer role model, um, not this year, but the prior two years before that. This was a tremendously beneficial experience for his development, not just academically, but socially and emotionally. It continued to instill values that we already have in our home in regards to acceptance and inclusion. It challenged him in other ways where he needed to develop alternative methods to socialize with his peers who were different than him. Unlike that shared experience, I've also had a child participate in this program who has disabilities and is on an IEP. My daughter was enrolled June 1st of 2019. That September, she began her first full year here, and as all of you are aware, that March was COVID, so the school shut down. As a parent of a child with disabilities, it's true that consistency, structure, and routine can be a core asset into the success of students who are atypical. But there's also something to be said for teaching that alterations to these routines happen, because that's an example of things that are out of our control. We expect so much of our children, especially the expectations that our education system puts on early learners. A huge piece of development to succeed both personally and academically at such an early age as socialization. I can tell you from the almost eight years I have experiencing a parent as a child with disabilities, as well as 12 years I have professionally working with at-risk youth and families, that socialization is key. There's a less emphasis on the whom as opposed to the what. It was brought up at the last meeting, the disruption to the routine for some of the kids, um, which I can't understand as a parent of both sides. But every child is different, and their experience will be different. But the majority of children will benefit from having supportive and typical developing peers around them, whether those kids are the same every day or fluctuate throughout the week. If nothing else, exposure to more children and different types of personalities will teach them more skills in how to cooperate and succeed in different environments with different peers. As we all know, kids transitioning from preschool to kindergarten have a significant challenge, as often the size of the class and the increase in different personalities around them can pose different expectations than the previous years. In situations where kids have been exposed to a wired variety of other kids, this may even alleviate some of those stressors going forward. I bring this information forward as a community member who has experience with the situation from both sides of the spectrum. I'm also the parent of a two-and-a-half-year-old and represent a population of parents in this community which are not represented currently. These are the upcoming learners and future students of this facility. I've attended and followed meetings for well over a year, and I can only speak to what I see. But I've heard parents bringing issues to the attention of the school and the school board in regards to concerns. And I've seen the school this year and in recent months taking actions to try to remedy some of those concerns. What I wanna say is that if we continue on a path of success for all of our students, we also have to consider our earliest learners. And take steps to close the gaps early to prevent some of the gaps we're seeing now with younger and older students. Children coming in on IEPs at age three are already a step behind their same-age peers. So if accommodating more typical students to ensure access to education means shortening the program for this upcoming year's population, then personally as a parent, I say some school is better than no school. Access to early education is so difficult in this community, there's very few resources for people. And there are many families who will go without if they're not able to go here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, public comment? Seeing none. Um, we have, um, do we want to go into non-public now and then come out and take care of everything now? What do you guys want to do?
I would say we've gone non-public last and went through preschool and.
Okay. Okay, do we have a preschool presentation, or is somebody just gonna speak on it?
We provided the information the board asked for, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so do you have questions on the preschool?
So I had emailed, um, Brian and Meredith, and I asked them, just because there's, during, I mean, it was last week, you guys had your preschool presentation. You said that this year we have 49 students, which I thought was a lot, which is great. Um, but I wanted to know in previous years, how many students have we had that applied that were both special ed and gen ed? Um, just to get some sort of, you know, some sort of reference number. Do you, I didn't check my, I haven't checked my email yet to see a response.
There was nothing.
It was uploaded, correct?
Uh, I believe, I didn't upload it, I was sent it to you.
Oh, okay, I didn't have my computer.
Okay.
It was being repaired, so we can share that information.
Um, I certainly can.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
Yes, just give me a couple minutes.
Yeah, no problem.
If you wanna like move on while I'm doing that.
Oh, okay, so that was one of my, my questions, um, and then also another one of my questions that I, I haven't asked, but I want to ask is, um, because some of the parents have brought up Ms. Andrea. Um, have we asked the, the preschool teachers that are actually gonna be in the classroom teaching these children about this schedule change or about this, the policy change? Have they, were they allowed to put any input in whatsoever about how these changes were gonna affect them as teachers? And, you know, the ratios in the room and making sure that we have all the staffing available?
So we, so last week, we were able to sit down with the, uh, with the kindergarten team and the preschool team to try to iron out some of the details as far as where three and four-year-olds were gonna go and trying to get a game plan together. And, um, the, the number of students we have this year is significantly different. It's, um, you'll see when the data comes over, that they expected right now, last year was 42, it's actually 56. And that, that number makes a huge difference in what we're gonna be able to provide. And so, um, they were included in the last meeting, and we did have a number of meetings throughout the school year. Um, I think with the numbers that we have, um, it, it requires us to look at things differently than we've done in the past.
Right, no, I was just making sure that they were, before last week's meeting, that they were included, um, with you and, uh, Ms. Baker in this, because they're the ones who are gonna be affected the most.
So were the numbers Brian again, or did you say what?
Mary's gonna send it over, um.
Fifty-six to.
I think, I think you have that document already in there.
Yeah, I do, and it says max enrollment is 68, and he is.
Correct, that, because there's available space.
Yep.
But currently, the 56 number that you're looking at, we already have registration information from those families. So we can cover those 56. Or if you look at the scenario that's down below, if we were to keep to a four-day-a-week model, we would have to do a lottery for all of the typical peers. And then 11 to 12 families currently who have submitted registration information, those families would be told that they were, you know, don't have a spot.
So I, so I have a question, um. I don't have the, um. Lisa, this is from she, your colleague, one. So as far as the preschool. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I didn't see her saying that.
Yeah, you wanna chime in?
Oh, yeah, I was just asking.
Um, Allison DeChico, um, one of the preschool teachers here. Excuse me, getting over a call. I've been here for 22 years. Um, this has been not one of my most fun years here, I can be honest with you. Um, last year had its ups and downs with Erica leaving and trying to fill the gaps. Um, one of my biggest issues that I have is that I was left out of 99.9% of all of these discussions. Discussions that were had about what preschool should look like, discussions that were had about what programming should look like. If a meeting occurred, it was because I initiated the meeting multiple times. Then when I did sit down, it wasn't, what do you think? It was, oh, this is what we're doing, and the decision was already made. And that happened at least three times. Um, some people may beg to differ, I'm not gonna come up here and lie, I've been here for 22 years, I love this job. I've had everybody with exception of Patrick's children in my class. I've been here for a long time. Um, no, I don't, I don't agree with two days a week personally, trying to get these kiddos ready for kindergarten. A full-day kindergarten on two half-days a week is not gonna be feasible. Because then what happens is then they show up and they're not ready, then the kindergarten teachers get, well, why aren't these kids ready for school? And it's just that snowball. Um, I came up with a plan, um, that I thought would work. It involved a two-day, three-day, and four, and five-day for different ages, um, different abilities. I had shared that with Brian, I don't know where, where that is as of now. Um, in the past, the three-year-old classroom did, for a while it was a lottery to get what we consider typical peer models. For a while, it was screening to get some strong kiddos, because if you want them to be typical models, you'd like them to have skills. Um, so we've only taken about four. This year, and the list that I got, I'd wanna say there was maybe 10 or 11. So trying to find room for all the three-year-olds and all the four-year-olds, we only have two classes, you can only do so much. And I'm not trying to put the four-year-olds above the three-year-olds, but if we're trying to get these four-year-olds ready for kindergarten, they, to me, should be here the maximum amount of time. Because then when the three-year-olds become four-year-olds, then they come five days a week. So it's kind of that give and take. Um, again, I just feel like I wasn't asked. Anytime I did have a meeting, the decision was already made, and I was told this is what we're doing. Um, and that even includes when they changed my classroom from a non-special ed class to a special ed class. Which, again, there's, some people have different reasonings as to why that happened, I don't know, it just happened, so. Um, I, I will do whatever needs to be done, whatever the decision ultimately comes down, I will show up next year, because I'm good at my job, and I will do the best that I can. And I will advocate for these kids, and I will teach them. I just don't think that two days a week for four-year-olds, trying to get them ready for a five-day full, they're gonna go from four, from six hours a week to 30 hours a week. That's a huge difference in time, time being in school. And even when the kids who come five days a week, you walk down that kindergarten hallway on week one and two of school, there are kids napping on the floor because they're just not used to the whole day. You know, now you're gonna go from six hours of school time to 30 hours of school time. I just personally don't think that it's enough time. So, um, and I also will say that I have been asking since December for a meeting to discuss preschool. And it took, and we're into April and we're still going around and around and around, so that's just my two cents worth.
Very well.
If you have any questions, I don't know if you have any questions.
So, um, do you, do you feel like that Ms. Andrea was a good fit with you, did you guys work?
Oh, I, yeah, I love Andrea, and I love Erica, I mean, Erica, Andrea's over there, she's, she's the crazy.
I don't know either.
No, Andrea's awesome, we get along great, I think she's fabulous in what she does. I love Erica too, Erica obviously had unfortunate circumstances in terms of, and I totally understand Andrea's contract was a one-year contract, because Erica, it was, he's been out on medical leave, I get that. You know, and that's not, it's, I would love for Andrea, I'd love for Erica to come back in for Andrea, we have love for all of her. I mean, ultimately, if this is the trend that we're gonna have, the, the amount of referrals we had this year, I've been here for a long time, I've never seen this many. It's, I, I, I don't even know where they're coming from.
So that's my question.
Yeah, so.
Where are they coming from?
I don't know, I mean, there are 10,000 outside effects that might be, you know, you have, we have COVID, and we have, you know, all of these things, but these, maybe people are moving in because they hate we have such a great program, and they wanna be part of it. That is, I've heard those stories as well.
So one of the things that, um, we recognized earlier in the year was when, when Brian was doing some data analysis on readiness for kindergarten, that a vast majority of kindergarten kids in years past had not had any preschool experience at all. And a number of reasons for that, Seabrook, in, besides Head Start, they, they did have a second preschool approved program in Seabrook, but it closed. There's no other approved, uh, preschool programs other than Head Start. And so that's impacting our numbers, right? We're required, um, to service the kids who are in referral, who might be identified with disabilities. And I was pleased to have this opportunity to do this today, although it, it wasn't easy to dig for the historical data for five years, but we were able to finally get it.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, what it shows us is, for the current school year, there are 11 three-year-olds identified. Those 11 are gonna push into the four-year-old program next year, plus we have a new one, so that's we already know of. So there'll be 12, uh, kids who are, be in the four-year-old program identified. We've already identified another 10 three-year-olds that are either, you know, part of our current program, that are still gonna be on the younger side of three, or are coming up from early intervention. The total number of identified kids in the current year was 13. The total number of identified kids currently for, for 24, 25 is 22.
And see, from Seabrook.
We're doubling, all from Seabrook, we're doubling the number of just identified kids. So, you know, with that 51%, 49% match, it's almost 50/50 to have typical peers, like everybody's saying the value of having those role models in the classroom. We wanna encourage as much of that as possible, right? And so, um, short of hiring another teacher in order to make the four days happen, this was a compromise to see how are we going to manage the program. So the two scenarios that we gave you is exactly what we laid out. Here's the program if we have the two-day-a-week program. And for the identified kids, those decisions about two days, three days, four days, those are made at the IEP team table. Those are made with the family, and they decide what services that the kids need. But for the typical peers, we laid it out in both scenarios. If we did it, we have room for everybody who has expressed interest in coming to the program, 56 total. If we don't, then you see what happens, we'll have the lottery, and then at least 11 families will be told that they didn't make it in for this round for this year. And those 11 kids eventually will come to kindergarten, and that's the worry. Yes, those typical peers will get less, but we have the burden of at least 11 or 12 families whose kids will get none. And that's what we're trying to juggle. Is it better for some to have none, or is it better for, for all of the children to be exposed?
So you, go ahead.
It will, it, there's, I understand you're just talking about Seabrook, but we are two miles away from Hampton, we are two miles away from Salisbury.
Yeah.
There is wonderful daycare preschool preps in Hampton Falls that my child is going to. There's wonderful daycare preps in Salisbury, North Hampton, Hampton, that other parents have been able to go to for this preschool.
We don't charge our families tuition here. Uh, in Hampton Falls, but.
It's free, yeah, but it's not gonna be free, we have to have another teacher eventually.
And in North Hampton, where we bring in, we bring in role models and peers, those families pay tuition for those kids.
Well, Mary, I don't know if you noticed so, but actually for our preschools, Hampton Falls and North Hampton, they have a program through the state that helps, um, pick families low-income or maybe other. they have a program through the state that helps families low-income or maybe other needs, disabilities, whatever it is, and they actually pay the tuition, so it can be free for many who attend, and I just wanted you to know that. There's not always a fee.
It has, in Seabrook, that has never been a requirement to ask our families to pay tuition. I mean, that's your purview, I would imagine, if you would like to start charging tuition.
So.
No, we didn't say that.
No, so my thing is, if I brought my daughter to, I put her in as a typical student, and we had a meeting where I brought her in, they screened her to see, you know, is she actually a typical student to be picked for the lottery? If I did not win the lottery, it is my responsibility as a parent to find other options. So I would have to pay for daycare, I would have to look into Head Start to see if I qualified for Head Start, I would have to get a family member. So it's not, I don't think it's fair to say, you know, there, there's actually no other options out there, because there's several options.
But we have data that shows that incoming kindergarten children who have come into kindergarten have come with no preschool experience at all.
I understand, but we also have a teacher right here that has not been in a single conversation about the change for the preschool, and has said right here, and I bet Ms. Andrea can agree with her, that this two-day, two-day is not actually going to help as many kids as you guys are saying it's going to.
I'm not saying that, I mean, obviously, I, I understand that, yes, some is better than none, and I do agree with that.
That's your choice.
My other issue though is, two days a week, trying to set a routine, trying, you know what I mean? They're coming on a Monday, Thursday, it's three days in between, then it's four days in between. We might be in February before the kids understand, you know what I mean? And it's just trying, just knowing what I need to expose them to and teach them. I treat, either cram it all down their throat, or I'm going to do half of what I can do. I just feel like it's just not enough time to, to get them ready.
Yeah, I didn't mean to misspeak on.
No, 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 that's fine, all right.
But my concern is just that, that there's these huge programs being put into place, and no teachers, just like the buses will stagger in schedule. There was no research to the actual bus schedule before it was brought to our attention. I don't want to vote on anything, or I don't want to accept anything unless I know for sure if this is a great policy to put in place.
So I, I just want to, I just have a quick question, so we're saying, so I guess I'm just trying to understand where the referrals are coming from? Because I know, I can speak on this, because my Cameron was in, he did the same thing. One was role model peer. Connor couldn't come in till the following year because there was no enrollment, Cameron came in all the year. Cameron was already tested in Boston and had a referral from McFaulan Intervention. So I guess my question is, is that Cameron came from McFaulan Intervention and went all the year because he turned three?
Right.
So where are you guys getting your referrals?
They come from early intervention.
Yep, so it, but is it like, which ones, like?
Waypoint.
Waypoint, where is, where is Waypoint? Is that the one that was?
Richmond?
Fort Worth.
Is it Stratum?
It was in Stratum.
That's where, that charging type, yeah, okay, yeah, they combined. So that's, so that's the only referral we get is from them?
A parent referral, I mean, a parent can make a referral at any point.
A parent referral for their own children.
Okay, I didn't refer, and it was done automatically from the agency because they turned three, so.
And I believe that the statute actually says that anybody can refer a child.
Yeah.
Yeah, teachers can refer.
Yeah, no, I was just asking.
Teachers, the librarian, anybody can refer a child.
And I think for this year is that it has been a lot, we've had a lot. Like, I've been here, we've been up and down, like, there were years that I had literally no referrals all year, when I was in special ed.
The data is showing, which is why this is a good exercise to do.
Yeah, and then there were years that I had, I remember I had seventeen three-year-olds in one class, and I was like, holy Toledo, I can't do this. So I had to get creative with how I did programming for the next year. And then the numbers went back down again, so then we were able to shift again, which, I'm, I mean, we don't know that this is going to be a continuing trend, that we're going to have twenty-two referrals. If we do, then the, you'd need, you'll definitely need another classroom, because you're not going to be able to fit everybody.
And that's what we said to you last meeting.
It's fabulous that all these parents want their kids to come to school.
Yeah.
I, I, there's no perfect answer.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, there's no perfect answer. I said, my biggest concern was that I just was not involved in a lot of the process and a lot of the decision-making. And then to just be presented, which when they presented last Tuesday, I found out two hours before the meeting, oh, this is what we're presenting. And I was like, okay. So I, I, just for me, having been here for as long as I have, I think I have a lot of knowledge. I just feel like I wasn't used properly, in terms of how we could have, I think we could have come up with ten scenarios by now, had we done the process the right way. That's just my biggest thing. I want kids to come to school, I want, I have fun, we teach, I love my job, I've been here. I want, you know, like I said, whatever the outcome ultimately ends up being, I will do it to the best of my ability. I just want to be involved in the conversation.
Can I ask you a question too? So if we were to start school in August, what would your vision be at this time that you're, you're used to and that your teachers are used to in your classroom, because you're the one in the trenches? You're the one with our kids. Is it, you're, I hear you saying two days is just, and that's like with anything, two days probably in a short amount of time is not enough. But if you were to see, envision August, would you hope that it would look the way?
I would hope for five days a week for the four-year-olds, personally, just because I would like to get them all in, you know, if we could fit them all. But the, the, the list that I was given, and I brought it home, and I kind of did all of this sticky notes and moved in everything, I don't know if it's changed since the time that I did it. When I did it, all of the four-year-olds that were on that piece of paper were in a five-day program. In the three-year-old class program, there were some two-day-a-week and some four-day-a-week, depending on different variables. But I made, everybody that was on that list, I had placed to start school in August. But the problem becomes, you only leave maybe four slots for incoming kiddos who might turn three next year, and that's where that problem comes. And like I said to Brian, I said, you can play the what-if game and put four kids in each class and say, well, we might get seven kids that turn three. Or you can plan for what you have right now, and if that comes, then we'll have to get creative, and whether it's, you, maybe we find funding somewhere for a half-day program, and you just do a half-day preschool program in the morning, and be able to alleviate some of that overflow. I don't know, like, I, I said, I have ten thousand ideas of different things we can do, I just wish people would ask my opinion.
Yes.
But, you know, because you have these new kids who just turned three, that's kind of their pre-three year. So maybe they only come a couple of days a week, because it's their pre-three year. Then on their three-year-old year, they come four days a week, and on their four-year-old year, they come five, there's things that we can do.
Right.
I, yes, we're limited on speaks, that's the other problem. Sometimes I can hang them from the ceiling, I don't know, we're going to. You know, I mean, it is, it's just, but, you know, it's just, if this is going to be the continuing growth that these people want now to utilize, then we may have to think about another space and another teacher.
So when you said that you were able to, back then, look at that all the four-year-olds were able to be put in, did you say four or five days a week, did you say five? Did that include typical peers as well?
Everybody.
So all the four-year-olds?
Yep, I guess, I don't know if that number has changed, that was last week. I don't know if something has changed between then and now.
So are we not doing this playgroup next, in the, on the Wednesdays, so that next year?
No, it, the playgroup, I think, could still happen, because the, the other classroom would still only be on a four-day schedule. So it would leave the, the morning open for that playgroup to come in.
Is the playgroup, Brian, is the playgroup just part of the grant that was issued to expand the preschool, or is that something completely different?
The playgroup is just, is just good for the community, it's, it's supervised, everybody that's in the building is, it goes through the, the normal precautions, like we would have a normal meeting, we would check, we'd check them in the front office, they get a visitor badge, and they're supervised the entire time.
So every single one of them have been fingerprinted?
No.
No, because they're not volunteering.
They're not volunteering, they're never, they're never left alone.
Their children through the playgroup.
Just like any parent coming in.
So they all go through the front office, they all sign in with Ms. Kim, and they have a visitor badge?
And it's amazing, it's, it's so awesome.
So, so wouldn't it be untrue if we actually saw them walking in the side door? Like, that wouldn't be?
Then they should be signing in down there, and then we have a sign-in sheet down there, so. But no, they, they should all come through the front.
Sign in door, where?
They should be all coming through the front door.
They might sign in, I don't know if they sign in or not.
What, a sign-in down there?
No, so we don't, we can do that.
We sign them in at the playground, we meet at the playground, and we escort them into the building.
So not the front door?
Not the front, that was just, you know, Brian's not there at the sign-in, so I'm sorry if I didn't share that. But we sign, we sign everybody in, we escort them in, and we then escort them out.
Just like we would for a classroom play or something else, we do the same process, it's, it's normal for us to do that.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was a part of the new, the, the grant that we had talked about, that you have already, that you said ends in June? That the playgroup is not a part of that grant? Okay.
It's really amazing, it's, we've actually met so many families that we wouldn't have met because of it, and we've connected them.
So that's where the referrals are coming from?
Most of them have other children in, in the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of them have other children in the school.
So it's safe to say that's where the influx of referrals are coming from, the playgroup?
If you look at that sheet that was uploaded, you had forty-seven in children pre-COVID in the nineteen-twenty school year. So your numbers this year are pretty comparable to what they were pre-COVID, and yeah, you're seeing a slight uptick for next year, because of referrals.
It took a dip over COVID.
But, but that fluctuation looks pretty normal, yeah.
Who, as a teacher, one of, one of you running this program?
What, the playgroup?
Yeah.
Um, Patrice runs the playgroup.
Patrice is running it.
Do you do playgroups in the other communities as well, where you're SAU twenty-one and SAU ninety?
We're working on starting a playgroup in SAU ninety.
Okay, and so Hampton Falls, North Hampton, there's no playgroup?
North Hampton just launched their preschool for the first time this year, and so they're considering playgroup for next year. And the model of preschool in North Hampton is shifting to an expanded day, which we're very excited about, because kids should be in school longer than two and a half hours. So they're getting ready for that, and we're talking to them about playgroup as well, so. The need is in Seabrook, the need for the things that you were talking about, the other options that are available to families in Hampton Falls and North Hampton, it's more difficult for our families to access those resources due to.
I don't agree with that, because I'm one of those people that, that did that back in the day. So I just, I feel badly that we keep saying, like, things for Seabrook are different because of us, and not the same as North Hampton. You know what, we're all human beings, we're all parents. I don't think there's any difference between me being from Seabrook or a child being from Seabrook than if they were from North Hampton. There, I've been around a lot of them, Mary, and we're all the same.
When we surveyed them, they told us that they have difficulties of transportation, they can't get their kids to other places.
But that's not just Seabrook, that Hampton has that too. I mean, we are, everybody has their groups with these different things. I just wish that we would stop kind of stereotyping that, because Seabrook is a very, very wonderful town with wonderful people.
Absolutely.
And maybe people do struggle, but you know what, we find ways, and, you know, I just, I'm bothered by that. But anyways, back on to preschool, I think that the teachers here, and I'm so thankful, because I did not know who Ms. Baker was. I thought she was the preschool teacher with Brian at the presentation at the last meeting, so I was kind of like, what happened to you? So, I'm glad to be here. And I think moving forward, that for me, I mean, I can listen to everybody all day, but when I hear from teachers, it really says a lot. It's like if I had a question for a fireman, or a police officer, or those people in those trenches are the ones that, I want to listen to you, I want to hear you. You know our kids, and then the administration supporting you, and supporting what you need in your classroom, is how that we all would hope that this is going to go from five-ten forward. That's me. So thank you so much. And did anybody else, Brian, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so what I said during our presentation at the last meeting was, what this tells us is that we're going to be here asking for more staff in the future. This is a growing thing, that our preschool program is growing, and so the reality is that there really is, that there's really no perfect answer to this. And, you know, I, I'll go on record and say that Allison was at eighty percent of my meetings, and the ones that I have to make hard decisions, and we have to do things, and that's kind of, my, my job is to present you with what I think is the best plan as an administrator, and those decisions that we have to make. And so, you know, every time that I met with the SAU about this, I went back and updated Allison the next day, or within two days, and so she was included in the entire process, so.
So I'm confused, we're going to need more preschool staff, but yet we're letting a well-qualified person that all the parents love walk out the door.
Kelly, you have a one-year leave of absence, a preschool teacher who's currently on leave.
Have we got something from her saying she's coming back?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, well, that's good, I'm glad we're finding ourselves in a meeting. Well, well, guess what?
You've not, you nominated last week on your list of folks that were nominated, and Ms. Stronka was on as a nominee, because she was on a one-year contract. Erica?
I'm hearing impaired. Those of you that don't speak in the microphone, I cannot hear.
Oh.
That really, really appreciate it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
I was going to say, good.
Okay, um, so, okay, so what do we want to do next? Let's get to preschool approval of expenditures.
Oh, wait a minute, we can.
Oh, okay, you've done with preschool, or?
Well, we're going to, I mean.
Is there any way that we, you guys could revisit this?
We need to. We need to, yeah, I would.
Instead of the program that you had presented to us, is there any way that you could revisit this with Ms. Allison and Ms., I believe, Erica, because she's the one that's going to be coming back next year, instead of this two-day thing? Is there any way, because?
We gave you both options. Right, okay. There's the two-day option and the four-day option. As we said, the four-day option means that we have, I think Mary said, eleven students who would be waitlisted, and we would choose the others through the lottery. So if that's what you want for the four-year-old program, we can certainly run it that way.
And so no one? So we're not willing to let Ms. Allison, the teacher who's going to be involved on the front lines every day, help plan this?
Well, I think she was involved in these discussions, you've heard her say, the preference would be for four days. So I think, and I met with her, with Brian, and sent to follow-up email to some questions that she had as well, so I'm confused by that. But these are the scenarios, we, we, we didn't want to say no to any of the families.
Is that, do the parents who, so the, the parents who originally told me it was a lottery?
They were, I believe they were told there was a lottery.
Lottery slash waitlist, the, the overwhelming number of people that showed interest meant that we weren't going to be able to bring, meant, meant that we weren't going to be able to bring people in. The, the two, the, the two-day, the two-day model, you know, and looking at doing placement with the classroom teachers like we would, getting their, getting their support and helping us group students and organize it in a way that maximizes their, you know, those are the things that Allison just worked on over the weekend, and she did a really good job with that. And so I, I feel like if, if our job is, is to help Seabrook and help as many kids as possible, the two-day, the two-day helps us do that.
The only reason I ask is a parent reached out to me today, and she said that she, her child, she believes was in a lottery. She was told it was going to be a drawing, the drawing had not been done yet. She reached out, asked me if I knew how many days it was going to be, she was not, it was a typical peer. And I said that we were having a meeting tonight, if she couldn't make it, maybe she could watch the meeting. She was under the understanding that the drawing was going to happen, then it wasn't, it didn't happen, it was delayed. And then she called, and she got a letter stating that she would know more on the twenty-seventh, or closer towards the end of the month. But she assumed that it may be at least four days a week, she's, and I didn't tell her that it was going to be two or what, or anything, because it's not like LACE. I just told her that hopefully she'll be, get an update closer to the end of the month. But I think that there is going to be some disappointment, because I think that people are thinking that it's going to be forty-seven for typical peers as well.
There's going to be disappointment if, if we go that route for families who were hoping to get their kids into some preschool.
I mean, I, I'm not going to lie to you, I do feel like that, being there three years old, they're just getting them, I mean, well, I know, but, I mean, I've had three years. Just getting them into the routine of going to school is a lot for them, and they do tend to take, you know, get tired and easy and, you know, overwhelmed. And it, I don't know, for me personally, it would make sense to give the four-year-olds more time, and, because they're, the three-year-olds are going to move up, and it'll be their turn to get more time at that point. I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking of how you can accommodate everybody without overwhelming children.
They've done two and three-day before as well, two, three, two, three, two, three.
Yeah, I understand.
Kelly, I want to piggyback on what you just said though, right? Because we're seeing our fifth graders and sixth graders and seventh graders and fourth graders and third graders, and they're all, the majority of our kids are already behind, okay? We have a small percentage of kids that are just like, you're doing so wonderful, and I'm so proud of them, and we still need to engage. But I'm going to say something, if we take and split the three and four-year-olds, instead of take those four-year-olds and really get them ready for the next year, I think in a way, I know we feel like we're doing a disservice to the littles that are coming in at three, but I feel strongly that the four-year-olds really need that engagement and be, and be ready. And so if, I mean, me as a board member sit, and I'm listening to the teachers, and I'm listening to the administrators, and I'm listening to my board, but I do feel strongly that the suggestion of focus on four-year-olds and then take what you can for three, we never made a lottery. I know we tried, and three years old, to be honest with you, I was like, do I really want my baby in there four days a week? And three years old, to be honest with you, I was like, do I really want my baby in there four days a week? And and you know, they they nap, they're tired. Um I understand that early on, but we have a beautiful library too. That has, we used to go all the time for playdates and and reading and and different really fun crafty things for that age. So I'm just putting it out there that it's not the end-all sale if we can't take all those um three-year-olds. For whatever reason, there are a ton of resources in our community area that we could also look at. But I feel like, given that we've got so many kids behind as it is, I don't want to see those kids coming in at a disadvantage that can't come for four years, four-year-olds, that's all.
Just, really, as we need all, sorry.
One, just one more point about what happens if we do that. Because of the required ratio of identified kids and typical peers, in the two-day option, we actually have space for thirty-four role models. Those are the kids that we already have identified through the registration form that they filled out. In the other scenario, if we go to the two, if we go to the four days a week, we only have room because we're capped in each section at five role models. We will only have room for twenty. So that's the cap.
Okay.
So it really impacts the number of families that we can bring in. So I just want to point that out. So it's a, it's a big difference.
I'm trying to do this.
And initially, you know, what we talked about, we need a teacher, like we need we need another program. It's just the the budget won't expand enough to do that.
So does Head Start do special, uh do they do intervention? Or is it Head Start?
It starts the whole CECOS, it's not just Seabrook.
So they do do intervention?
They, Head Start, socialization?
They do not?
No, I do not believe that they they serve kids with IEPs. They might refer a kid to us.
Yes, but they don't do intervention?
We have two.
My name is Nicole Welch. I have two students right now in the preschool, or two children, sorry. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old. And I can tell you this now, if I sent my three-year-old to school next year to Miss Allison, she would have a harder time if she, if he was only going two days a week right now. She would have a hard time making my, having my child learn sending him next year at four-year-olds to go five days a week. I have the theory of if it isn't broken, why are we trying to fix something that isn't broken right now? We've done the lottery for years. I have gone to the school, I did Seabrook Elementary, I did Seabrook Middle School, I've been through the whole SAU. It's not fair to our children now to cut them down from where they're going so many days a week now to cutting them back. It's not gonna prepare them for kindergarten next year and it's gonna give our kindergarten teachers a harder, make them work harder to try to put what they need in their brains. We already have, we're struggling on issues with our kids' learning. Why are we gonna cut back on their learning? Um I've also, I want to touch on the playgroup as well. I have been to the playgroup. I went one day, there was no structure, there was no security, and I never returned. Um how, the how is it that Kim knows who's coming in this building because not one of them went to the front office? There's no visitors pass. Yes, they have to sign in on a clipboard, but what's that gonna do for anyone in the school when a fire drill happens? And nobody knows how many kids are in that class right now. What's it gonna do when these parents aren't fingerprinted or background checked? And my niece and nephew are sitting in the cross, the classroom across the hall. Who's to say they can't walk right out that door? There's no security in that classroom to be there. Why can't we use a rec? Seabrook has a great rec center, Seabrook has a great library that we can be connected with these places to be able to host this playgroup outside of our school. So our children feel more safe. I felt safer my kids going to the school knowing that we had to be background checked and fingerprinted and the parents were not being, walking into the school all willy-nilly. And there was actually security. And now there's no security to that. And then these children are now going into a classroom and destroying artwork from the children that has been put out. They are eating, they're putting toys in their mouths, there's no sanitation going on in the classroom. So now all these kids with immune deficiency or like immunity disorders and everything else are now getting sick constantly. Because there's no sanitation going on in the classroom anymore. There's only so much that can be done. And it's not fair to our kids. There's no structure, there's I just don't get how we can let the playgroup go on in the safety of our children. And it's not fair to our children. And then on Andrea's contract, who's to say, is, is this teacher coming back going to be physically fit enough to be able to provide our children with a service that they need?
Point of order, I don't think we want to be entering into that discussion about personnel.
I'm just, it's something that could be asked though. Is this person gonna be fit to return to work full-time and and give our children the, what they need?
I don't think we can have a discussion. She's was on a medical leave of absence and if she's cleared by her doctor, I mean, that's between the medical leave and and the school. I don't think that we should be touching somebody's medical problems.
It's not touching, I was just asking a question if our children are gonna be taught the same way that they should be.
Okay, well loaded.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um anybody else? Because if not, we're gonna um we can, yeah. Go right to, you guys have one too. Oh, sorry. Just real quick though, because you've been having a lot of it.
Yep, and there's a lot of stuff that I think is some good planning, but I would just like to say is she's only been to the playgroup once, she stated.
No, don't do that.
I only missed two and I just wanted to let you know
Let's not talk to parents, I don't want.
that there are three adults that take the parents in.
Who are the three adults that take the parents in?
Patrice, Annalise, the district-wide social worker, and Heather, I'm sorry, I don't know her name, last name, but she works for Waypoint.
Right.
She's from Waypoint.
Have at Waypoint.
They take attendance.
Do you work too?
I, I am just a parent.
Oh, okay. Well, not just a parent, parents in school?
I'm just a parent with a toddler.
Right, I was just wondering how.
And students in the school and live in this community and participated in an opportunity for socialization for my toddler.
Okay.
Attendance is taken, the attendance is then given to Kim, so if there were an emergency or a fire alarm or something, she would know which parent and which kids were in the building. It gets a little crazy when we're leaving in the hallway. I'm sure Allison and Andrea would agree to that, but everybody's right there. We use our own separate door to come in and come out. No parents are left unsupervised or unattended. There's play on the playground, weather pending, then there is free play at different centers that they have set up in there, including a craft table, a sensor table, and certain stations. Some of the toys that maybe are more messier or more pieces are put away so that there isn't a huge disaster. Then the last half an hour, they're brought together. There's story time, they sing songs, um participate in activities that Patrice leads, um and then everybody is called to get their things and to leave.
What did you say? They participate in activities that Patrice needs?
Leads, leads.
Oh, leads, okay. So um yeah, I I appreciate that, but I think everything you just said sounds like the rooms that I used to go to with the library with the kids and I I'm just, just putting that out there.
I, I just wanted to clarify, it's common that participates tremendously regularly, but that's not exactly accurate of what is occurring.
Yeah. Yeah. And for me as a, as a parent, I will tell you, back in the day, I don't want anybody coming in the side doors of a school, especially in this day and age. Everybody should be funneling through our main office doors and that's for a hundred reasons. So I'm just, that's, that's my opinion.
I think it's to have less disruption to the older kids because it's more mainstream.
Yeah. Well, there's no disruption at the front office, there's no classrooms there, that's all I'm saying.
Than to walk around the hallway, I mean.
Yeah, that's where they should be coming and that's just me, I'm one board member. Sorry, safety's a big issue.
I'm fingerprinted. Done.
Me too.
So, I don't, I don't know if I'm remiss. The only thing I know is that after COVID when we had to be fingerprinted, it was anytime to walk in the school, you had to sign at front office, you had to be approved and fingerprinted. The only time you were not required to be fingerprinted to go to your student, students events was if it was after school. You could go to a concert after school, but if the teacher had any type of Christmas party or anything during the day in the classroom, you had to be fingerprinted. You did, because I remember very specifically.
Visitors are different than volunteers.
I wasn't a volunteer, I was a parent.
So we have a number, if if kids are, if we're doing a play or we're doing something in a classroom, we're doing uh a wax museum, it's very, very common for parents to come in. And if you read my Sunday message this week, we're not requiring an ID at the front desk. Um so driver's license required, so we will be scanning all ID, all IDs, we have the capacity now to check for a background check. So anybody, if you read my message this week, starting on Monday, a driver's license is required to get in our building and it runs a background check immediately.
For everybody though.
For anybody that comes in our, in the front door.
Even the playgroup.
Starting this week, the playgroup will go through the front door.
Good. Awesome.
We'll scan their license.
Can we have that reflected in the minutes, please?
It's in my Sunday message too.
Thank you. And please, please come, it's, it's a joy. You, you would love it. Come and check it out.
It's beautiful.
It really is.
Okay, so, um anything further on the preschool? Does the board want time for non-public? Are we gonna vote, help vote? What are we gonna do with this? Or just kind of, because last time we just kind of listened, because we didn't really know, we didn't have a presentation. So what do, what do you want to do?
Is, are we being asked to vote?
Well, if you leave it like it is, you know what I mean?
Parents have been waiting since March fourth, we, we put it on the agenda, trying to get this to you guys because we wanted you to know about it because it was significant.
Gotta be done.
And they're really, you know, they're, we really want to plan to grow this week. This, there's really no great, perfect answer.
If this is requiring a vote, I'm not comfortable doing this if the teacher doesn't recommend it. That's just my opinion, I'm just one person.
Um we heard from the teachers and we've heard from the administration twice. Um I, I, I'm sorry, but like I don't know anybody more than Miss Allison and the other one, I know you're a little new. But um just like our other, if Miss Ball were to stand up here in front of me, I would have a difficult time not thinking that she was giving me the classroom write-on information. So I feel comfortable taking the um request that Allison had given us and let her work with the administration and make that work. I am comfortable with that. We have teachers here, we've got to start giving them some credit. They know what their kids need and I'm not taking it away from anybody else, but it sounds like there was some of this going on and whether there was or wasn't is neither here nor there for me, but I feel strongly that I'm comfortable making, making that um motion if needed, please say.
Um I just had a quick question. The children that are currently, the three-year-olds that are currently in the four-day program, they would move to the four-year-old two-day program?
If they have an IEP that says four days, they get four days.
Okay, but a, a typical kid, would they move forward to the four-day? Will they be, they'll be knocked back to two?
Typical peers go to two.
If they're the three-year-old program, they're probably only coming three days now, correct?
No. No, they come four. All three-year-olds come four.
So all three-year-olds and all four-year-olds come four days a week currently?
No, three, three-year-olds come four, four-year-olds come five.
Oh, okay.
My program is five days a week.
Except some three-year-olds in IEPs can't come five.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple, we do have a couple that come five because that was in their IEP.
So the three-year-olds now that are, will, instead of doing the five days, will be cut down to two days?
Yes.
Uh, we have three-year-olds coming five days?
No, the four-year-olds are going five days.
Next year.
The four-year-olds are going to kindergarten.
I understand that, but I'm saying the way it's set up now, that four-year-olds are going five days. So the three-year-olds, instead of going in, if we kept it the same as it is, instead of going from three to five, they'll be going from three to two?
Yeah, we go from four to two.
From four to two, instead of four to five.
Right, four to two.
Yes.
Four to two. Those four-year-olds are going to kindergarten.
So I'm gonna make a motion
Yeah.
that we keep the uh preschool schedule the exact same way that it is. And um if we want to do any changes for next year, that the uh preschool teachers are um in the loop, in our part of it. So my motion really is for um the preschool program to stay the way it is right now.
And we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have discussion?
Well, you seconded that, may I have a ten?
Yeah. I'm really struggling as a leader because what you guys are asking me to do is to change outcomes for, for our students and you're asking me to, to, to do what I think is best for students. I'm the principal that you selected for this school. And, and we're gonna go do things the same way we've always done them instead of listening to me. So I'm really struggling because you guys have asked me to change outcomes and to, to help improve the school and I'm, and each month I'm feeling like the decisions that I'm making aren't the decisions that, that like how can I change outcomes if you guys don't trust me?
So I understand your frustration, I'm also frustrated, and I'm new to the board, I'm trying to absorb everything that I can, I'm trying to learn as much as I can. But I, from hearing from what Miss Allison has said though, that she wasn't involved in it, is, I'm sure she's just as frustrated and it, it's really hard for me to believe that a student that is currently going you know, three days a week, that could or could be reverted to two instead of the full five, I don't think that's going to help. I don't think it's, that change to include everybody is going to help these individual students um as a collective to, to be prepared for kindergarten, to go from two days for half a day to the full five. That, instead of what we have in place now, that kind of gives those kids an up. Um and, and then like I said, if we, we rework something for next year, I just think it's a lot of this information is not, you know, great towards this new program.
There's no, there's no good answer. There's, the reality is, is we need, we need additional staff and that's um what we, what we see every year, my three years and my, my time here before shows you that the kids that have nothing, those are the kids that come in and they're the hardest. So our idea is that, that something is better than nothing for these kids. We've got kids, so we've got kids that will get absolutely nothing and those will be the ones that come in and never get caught up. And so can we, you know, two, two days a week, two, three days, that like, that's better for those kids. They come in and they have a school. As far as the playgroup goes, we have kids who know that this is their school now. They come in and this is my school, this is my playground, this is my home and and the relationships that we've been able to make are so important. So, you know, like, we can keep doing things, if, you know, if you don't want me to come with, with ideas, we can keep doing things the way you want. I just can tell you that I'll never be able to turn the school around if I don't have your support.
Brian, I think what would have helped, and this is just me, when you, with the presentation came forward, if Miss Allison and Miss Andre's were there with you as partners and presented to us, uh we probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. But unfortunately, it didn't. And so with that said, I'm gonna ask for a vote um on the motion and the second um to move forward so we can get moving forward with our meeting tonight. Um, hi, sorry.
We have to copy it because I have a daughter, that's gotta be three soon.
Do you, yeah, you don't want to, come on.
Well, I'm there.
Just really quick and then we're gonna go.
I know what's public speaking.
All right, go ahead.
Like, whatever decision's made, it's difficult. But why don't we try to revamp the playgroup? Why don't we try to add more education to playgroup? There's ways around it. I pay seventeen hundred dollars a month for my daughter to be in daycare. You know, I don't want to pay that money, I'm from Seabrook, I can't afford it, but um I do for my daughter to get an education, so there's ways around it. It's not just, oh, we're not, we don't want to leave everyone behind. They're gonna get, they're not gonna, they're, they're gonna be, if we don't let them start at this point, then they're, they're, they're gonna fail throughout our school system. Like, no. There's so many resources in our community, or we can reach out to these people that may need help and get them their resources or give them some ideas of, like maybe we can revamp the group, maybe we can add other things like in our library to educate these little kids. You know what I mean? It's not like, oh, these kids are getting left behind, they're never left behind. You know, it's like, if they can't come to our school now, then they're left behind. That shouldn't be a thought. It should be, well, it's too bad we can't fit them in this year because they're still little, but we can help them with, we can help them and provide them with the resources that they need. So it's just difficult because it's like thinking in your head, like, if these, if the, if we leave all, if we leave, to not leave anyone behind, but you're failing the kids that already been there. By if they're there four days a week and then making them go down to two days, you're failing those kids.
Right.
They're already used to the structure, like kids can't, like my daughter, she's thriving now that she's full-time because I can afford it now, but like it's like you can't say, oh.
You want it for everybody.
Oh, you can't do full-time now. They thrive off of routine and schedules. You know what I mean? And the families have jobs, like they, it's just sad.
We'll fix it, I promise.
It's just sad. It's like, oh, your kid, your kid can't come now two, four, four days, five days a week because we need to fit in these other kids, which I understand that thought. But it's like you can't change, it's so hard to make decisions last minute like this, that it's so big.
It is.
You know what I mean? So, that's all I can say.
It is.
Can you, can you state your name for me for the record?
Sydney Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
And I, and I think.
And I don't, I, I don't want this to be the end-all-be-all, Brian. I don't want this to be like, hey, we never want to see anything like this.
We give up, you know?
But just for something that's so last minute and I've heard so many I, what I'm trying to say is that I am open to help. I just feel like for next school year, I feel like it's too soon and we're hurting the kids that are already here. I guess is my, is my point of view. I don't want you to think that there's a wall up between us or, or you and the board, it's, that's not what I want. But I just don't think that this is the state we're at right now.
And I just want to say one more thing. I know you're about to vote, but this will require us to have a lottery for the thirty-four families with interest and we will be choosing twenty of those children to come to four days a week. So I just want to be clear about that.
I'm aware.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that. Okay? So I just wanna make sure that we're aware that that's gonna happen.
You know, and I think, I think this kind of, again, it's not about this decision or you, Brian, it's about, I think that there's been so many decisions, and it's not just you. There's been so many decisions that have been brought to the board, and Lacey, you know, she's just here, and even the buses, there's like no, there's, there's thought on your part. And I appreciate that, cause you guys are doing everything you can to address the things that you feel like you see, but when you involve everybody, sometimes it brings things to the table that you didn't think about, cause it didn't involve you. So, I mean, the same thing with the buses, you know? The whole entire thing with the bus. That was, that was crazy. Like, we had the whole town in uproar, we had the whole school in uproar, we had the whole administration in uproar, we had people. You know, the bus company I heard was even in uproar, like, oh, great, all my employees are gonna leave. It wasn't that the bus company couldn't accommodate us. It's that the bus company said, my employees are gonna leave. That's what they, so my point is, is that the first, if you, it's not, we're now in April. This was brought to us last week. This was done back in March. Like, even if you didn't know that many people then, coming to us earlier, and everybody being like, hey, this is the progress we're having. Then we can kind of, but when it comes to us all at once, it's almost like chaos. It's like.
If the numbers are gonna go up after this, I would put it in the, in the budget, both will add, add the next teacher.
Absolutely.
I think, I think the board is pretty well, like, if we're gonna add teachers, like, that's,
That's never been an issue.
That's, I think the most important thing is adding teachers. So if the program is gonna grow, and I do agree with, I like, three-year-olds, they, they're gonna need some education, the four-year-olds are gonna need more, and then we, that's why we have a kind of a step-up program. I, I would, and then, again, it'll be getting the budget passed, but if we start talking to people early and often about adding additional educators, I think that, I think all the teachers would agree that more educators is better than less educators, and I think that, you know, trying to cut people out right now to just add a couple extra more on the earlier end, I, I think focusing on the ones about to go into kindergarten, making up that, you know, the majority of the space is, to me, is more beneficial. And, um, I would like to see a goal to add a teacher. I can, I can, I can one hundred percent support that in a budget, you, you asking for an additional teacher.
And enrollment in kindergarten or preschool will always be last minute. It's one of those things. We had a kid this year show up the first day of school thinking he could start. You know, and that's, it's literally, and the ones that register last are the ones that need the most.
That's part of this problem, is that it's April. We know that by August, the numbers we have now are only gonna grow. So we're locking it now at that twenty. And that means anybody else who hasn't thought yet to file paperwork is gonna be an automatic no.
And I can tell you too, last year, a lot of kids didn't come to preschool because of the bus being cut.
And that's another thing.
But they, they need to grow.
I didn't have anybody that dropped out.
I know kids that moved here that could not join the preschool.
Anybody who asked, we gave transportation.
There wasn't much here, they had no transportation.
I gave, we did give transportation last year, everybody. Nobody, nobody was turned down. I just wanted to be on the record.
Was it cut the year before, Brian? There was a transportation issue?
No, but we still made room for those kids. We still made room for anybody who needed it.
But it was.
The bus was cut because the budget didn't pass. It was, it was not the, the budget issue.
Yeah.
Kathy. Uh, Kathy AM, I just wanna say, um, as a parent and a grandparent now, um, I think three, and I get it, kids that are on IEPs, that's different. Four-year-olds are always the ones that stop school. Um, we have a great rec center. Um, my granddaughter takes advantage of preschool program at the rec. It's awesome. I bet Cassandra would love to have more kids. Um, once they're three, I think it's a really good start for a three-year-old. I don't think a three-year-old needs to be in the school setting. Yeah, that's really young. Four-year-olds, hold on. So the four-year-olds that are already here are the ones that deserve to be here. And I don't think they should be cut down. That's going from four days to two days. That's not right. That's, that's not right. I don't think that's right. And we have a great, um, rec center. Again, that could handle the three-year-olds. That's my idea.
Thank you, Karen.
So my motion is still on the table.
Yeah, are we ready to take a vote?
I'll second it, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, all in favor?
What do you vote in line? Did you repeat that?
Yeah, I made it, Eric.
She, she, uh.
Oh, oh, she's, she's.
Can I read it out? Yes, please.
I'm stuck, give it up.
I'm sorry about that. But look, before you take a vote, you always read the, I guess you're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna read it to you.
I spoke about.
I'm just gonna read the motion to you.
Sure.
So Lacey Fowler made a motion to keep the preschool schedule as is, and any changes for next year's preschool program, teachers should be part of the decision process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and now moving on is.
Okay, so did I get unanimous?
unanimous.
Yeah.
We need, we need the vote.
All, all in favor. All in favor.
All in favor?
We already did, I'm sorry.
Okay. Unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you for that, please.
You're welcome. I don't go back to you.
Okay, so, um, is it non-public time? Are we ready?
We have audit reports, I think.
Yeah, do, we have, um, somebody's, you know, waiting for, um, fifteen minutes on the clock. You wanna do the audit or do it when we come out? Uh, yeah.
It's up to you. If you wanna, I don't, I think that was the only thing that.
The audit report, I think what, the only thing is with that is a request that, um, at some point in the next meeting, that we actually, first of all, have the last two years provided, so we all have one go. And then if you want a presentation from the actual auditors, we can place that on the net, the net, all right?
Yeah.
All right, so that, so that.
To be clear, are you looking that for the May meeting?
Um, we'll look at that, but come, a meeting coming up, right Kelly?
So we'll just wanna be able to coordinate with the auditors. If you want them to hear the presentation.
Um, and then expenditures. Okay. You want them the next meeting, Kelly?
Sure. May, the, May fourteenth is the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and the logo, um,
On the next meeting.
If that could be on the next meeting, so it was brought to our attention, the logo's gone to Seabrook, sea with a wave, and no more Rams for the elementary school, and I was shocked to hear that, cause I was a Ram, and I was not more than shocked, so I want a little, uh.
It was brought to the board, and it was done, it was done. It was brought to the board in their defense, in a flat twenty-one seconds.
It was brought to the board, part of the school handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an easy fix to reconsider if we need to. All right, so, if anybody wants to reconsider, you can do it. I am fine with that. Next meeting, all right, Rams on the next meeting. Next meeting, all right. So now officially, we're ready for non-public, right?
So, are we skipping a few expenditures?
Do you want to do the expenditures right now? Do we have a vote to reconsider the expenditures instead of five thousand?
Oh, yes.
Twenty-five, I got, somebody wrote to me, I'm trying to.
It was me. So, um, I just, regardless, it's different, but I reviewed the procurement policy at the town. And the procurement policy was twenty-five hundred. I know they used to have it five thousand. But there ended up being a lot of things brought forward all at once at five thousand, and it ended up being a lot of spending, so I just didn't know if anybody else was willing to, if I made a motion to change the approval to twenty-five hundred versus five thousand.
So we need a motion to reconsider?
We have a tight budget.
Yeah, so a motion to reconsider.
I made a motion to reconsider changing.
Yeah, second.
Changing, what was your motion again?
The expenditure, to reconsider the vote.
To reconsider the vote for the amount of five thousand dollars for approval of anything being spent that's not on the budget line.
Correct.
Yeah, second reconsideration.
I'll second the.
Second, Jen. All in favor?
I. Yeah.
So that's my motion, that we change it from five thousand to two, twenty-five hundred.
Motion for five thousand.
To, to change it.
To change it.
To reconsider, now we're in the reconsidering process, and I have to make a motion.
Yeah, change it, and then a second.
So she's gotta announce a motion.
I just, yeah, motion to change it from five thousand to twenty-five hundred.
Okay. You mentioned procurement, but just to be clear, you're still talking just about the purchasing of anything that is not budgeted?
Correct.
So not procurement per se?
Well, no, but I was looking at, it's, right, well, they have purchase orders, they have, the time, they, even if it is on the budget, they have to have purchase orders for everything that goes to.
We do purchase orders for everything.
Okay. So we have a motion, um, do we have a second on the motion to go from five thousand to twenty-five hundred?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
I.
Aye. Okay. All right. All right. Okay, now I think we can, uh.
So while, while you're all talking about the agenda for the next meeting, and just as a reminder, um, could we talk about the status of the SAU withdrawal article?
No, we're not gonna do that tonight. We're gonna.
No, I asked you, I asked you.
Yeah, not tonight, but for May, for May.
That's on the agenda for May fourteenth.
It's already on the agenda.
Thank you, Maureen.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Make a motion, uh, for a roll call to enter non-public session under RSA nine-one dash A three, I, I, at.
R four eight.
I four eight.
I'll second it.
Uh, it's a roll.
Oh, it's a roll hall. Just in the second roll, sorry, what letter?
A through M?
You have an E, he has to specify.
We've always, it's always been in the, I don't understand, it's always been on the job.
Yeah, because no one has told us why you're going into non, because no one has told us why you're going into non-public, so we can't read this.
So, read, you wanna read A, and then we'll say yea.
It's in your, can't you do this, so.
Well, you better specify something, cause the notes are gonna have a bunch of question marks. In minutes, so.
Would it be A or E? Maybe it's a question for Mr. Casasso?
Yeah, could you help us out with the lettering, um, for the A through N, what we should be going in?
Under A, under A and A.
Mr. Casasso. A and E?
A, yes.
Oh, yeah. All right, mark your Patrick just in case.
Thank you.
So we know who to blame.
All right, so, Patrick, you're making the motion?
I'm roll calling.
And who is making the second? Lacey?
Lacey.
And here comes, take the vote. Jen? Yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Lacey?
Yes.
Maria?